I apply the allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is approval of the agenda with one addition under new business, item D, DTE Street Light Conversion. If there's no other addition, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition.
Support.
Move in supporting to approve the agenda with the one addition. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stating motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the April 9 meet.
I make the motion, the minutes be approved as presented.
Support.
Move in supporting, approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stating motion carries. The next item is the financial report.
We began the month with $457,673.65. We took in receipts of $8,073.01 and we made disbursements in the amount of $173,478.71, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $292,267.95.
I'd like to make your motion to approve the financial report as submitted.
Support.
Move in supporting to approve the financial report as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stating motion carries. Correspondents, item A, Council on Aging. Every year, they send us a letter in the obvious request funding. And they do get county millage. And they do an absolutely great job for all the people they help. Even help a lot of people in Casco, even though they're not really located in Casco. In the past, we have not given money because basically how many people ask, then you have to determine, well, I'll give this guy some money, but not that guy. So if they're getting millage money, in the past, we just have not responded. I'll just add a little bit to that, that if you're a senior, you need meals, or if you need transportation to the doctor's office, you can call Council on Aging and get transportation from everything here to the river. From everything here going west, call Richmond VMS for transportation. It's in your newsletter that you got from the township that I gave you. Okay, moving on. Item B, Richmond Heritage Days. We received this in June 29th and 30th in Richmond. The Historical Society is going to have Richmond Area Heritage Days, a whole host of things to do. They moved that barn in there and restored it all in the last couple of years. They have a couple of wild cabins and some old equipment and stuff. So it should be a very good event. Okay, moving on. Old business, park updates. I'm going to give you all information, and I'm going to turn it over to Colleen. Our money's on the way, but it got detoured because they sent it to the Casco Township in Allegan County. So we just found that out today. So they're mailing it to us, so we'll either get it Thursday or Monday. Then there's going to be one more check for 10%. And I called the state, they didn't know if they mailed it yet. So worst case, it goes to Allegan, and I already told them, and they'll mail us that too. So the money's been approved, it's been mailed out, we just sent it to the wrong.
I bet they thought it was Christmas morning, getting a big old check.
Well, they do what's theirs. They called us. Okay.
You guys get stuff?
Yes, all the time.
All the time.
Well, if you Google, they must have changed because probably the last year, we get more. So when you Google, it must come up on us before Allegan.
Yeah, it does.
I don't know why.
Yeah.
So we actually get more than we used to.
Yeah.
It's just amazing how many rivers or lakeside properties are sold by real estate agents, and everything comes to us.
Oh yeah, complaints and everything. So the first thing you do is say, what street are you on?
There's no lake.
Yeah.
They're on 112th Lake Street. Oh, no.
I'm going to take a trip out there, so just go to Wonderborn.
But there are other townships that have duplicate names too.
Oh yeah, lots of them.
Berlin, Columbus.
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
They're good, they should about it, and we get it sorted out at tax time.
But our township is named differently. Yours is like a derivation of Lewis Cass or that. And I told them about ours, ours because one, the first landowner of that, you know, when Chinatown was chopped up, Chinatown, Casco, it was from a village along the shores of Casco Bay, Maine. And they said they wish their township wasn't named after one like that. Okay, Colleen's going to fill you a little bit on the park.
Well, I spoke with Ms. Blau today. She's the planner that we hired to, first of all, look over the topographical survey of the park property, which she only received last week. And she was hoping that it would come before the leaves on the trees all leaved out. So she is looking at that. She's hoping when she studies it and knows what's what, she will enlarge it and send it to us. My call to her today was to reiterate our invitation to come to the ribbon cutting on the 18th of June, Tuesday, at 6:00, which she will do her best to make. She will be out to the park property before that to take a look around, to see, you know, on the ground, what she's talking about and what she's dealing with. She suggested that we go ahead with our plans, and we invite the general public to the ribbon cutting ceremony. And a week after that, on the 25th of June, which really is also open to the public, we will have a Parks and Rec Committee meeting here with Ms. Blau, who will by that time have some grasp of the topographical and where we might start.
June 25th, 7:00?
June 25th at 6:00 for the Parks and Rec. We just set this up this afternoon. And June 18th at 6:00 at the park for ribbon cutting. I have received calls from three ladies in the township who might be willing to serve on the Parks and Rec Committee. I think I've lost two gentlemen because of job applications. But these are ladies that know how to get things done, so I'm very pleased. And as soon as my email gets fixed tomorrow, promised, I will be sending a note out to everyone who is interested, that I know of, of serving on the Parks and Rec, and have them come to the ribbon cutting, and of course, to the first meeting. I'll want your input a little bit on what we should provide for residents at the ribbon cutting. It's only going to be like a 20-minute ceremony. So I will have some sort of refreshment there. We're not going to pave the parking lot, or bring in porta-johns, or anything like that, because it's only going to be a little bit of a thing. But we will get the message out to the public on our website and on the Casco Township Neighbors website, and see if we can get some people to come and meet each other and take a look at the park. So if you have any ideas of what you would like served at the ribbon cutting, please do let me know.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Moving on. New business, item A, Ira Township Park Contract. In your packet was a copy of the proposed contract, and then threw in a copy of the old contract, and I threw in a copy of the runs that they have been handling. And if you looked at that, 2018 was weird. I don't know if there was an anomaly, or what it was. But they had a ton of runs. They figured it was mostly traffic accidents. But so they tried to put a little paragraph in there that if it continues that high, we might have to open the contract and look at reimbursement for that many runs.
2012 was really bad.
Well, they were first responders.
Yeah.
And then halfway through the next year, they went from first to not being first. Well, then, we went really good for four years until last year. They had more runs than Richmond last year. So, oh yeah, we don't know if it's going to repeat itself this year. And it doesn't say that price has gone up, it just says we'll discuss it. Which is fair enough.
I wonder if it had to do with some of the bridge construction or?
Or could it be?
Just 26 mile road.
Opeoans too?
Just 26, it's so damn busy. The rates, the first year, which starts this July, is $45,100. And it goes up 2.5% every year for five years, which is basically what's been doing the last four, and is pretty much cost of living. So I don't see a problem with that. You mentioned the 129 back under 2012. In 2012, they were paying almost $53,000, because they had a crazy formula.
Yeah.
Plus they had all those runs. So, and what costs to run a fire department, I really can't complain about the 2.5%. Plus, it gives us five years.
Four, five year?
It's a five-year contract. And we get along great with Ira, there's no problems there at all. So I would strongly recommend we approve the contract.
I make a motion to approve the fire contract with Ira Township, support?
Move in supporting to approve the fire contract with Ira Township. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Luke Allen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, item B, Ira Township Service Agreement. Several years ago, and it wasn't a contract that Richmond Fire Department would not review plans. So I met with Ira, and they have two people that are state certified. And they said, yes, they would review the plans and do one inspection for $100. So we had an agreement. We approved it, they approved it. So they would definitely like to have it in a contract form to that effect. I put in the update that we're going to have to change our fee schedule, because the only thing they changed was a reinspection fee. We don't have to do a fee schedule. So it doesn't cost us anything, and we have the advantage of selecting which site plans need fire review. You know, are they going to have few on site, or what are they doing there, or is it just a little storage thing? So I would recommend we approve the agreement.
Move we approve the agreement with Ira Township for fire inspections of site plans as needed.
Move in supporting to approve the review and inspection agreement with Ira Township. Any discussion?
Do we need to amend our fee schedule now?
No, I'll print it out for you, and then we can put on the bottom of the date you approved it. Because even if they submit today, you wouldn't get to private reinspection until they were ready for a C of O, which is going to be obviously a couple of months away. So we have time for that. Okay, moving on, the next item is?
Roll call vote. Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please. Sorry.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, Trail Connector Meeting. A little while back, there was a county line trail connector meeting, and several of our members attended. So I'm going to let you guys kind of cover it. And they're basically switching the thrust. Originally, it was going to be Grashit, now it's 32 mile. So it is what it is. So, Colleen, do you want to?
Well, you know, they do really wonderful work, and they put a lot of thought in this. And one of the things I liked best was the map that they gave us that shows us these routes from all the way from South Haven to Port Huron, these connector trails. It was really very nice. But yes, now, they are talking about a trail that will connect St. Clair down to Richmond to the, what is that?
Macomarch.
McCollmore.
Right.
Holka Trail.
They will come up Fred Moore Highway and Division, and they'll figure out the bridge when they come to it. But that is the route they're going to take. And it was hard for me to picture that, but when they said, if you're picturing a trail and the setback from the road and the setback from the houses, think of the trail that goes along King Road, and how wide that is, and how, I mean, here's your road, here's your setback of the grass, and then here's your trail. And that is what they're going to do on Fred Moore Highway. Most of the houses on the St. Clair side of Fred Moore are way back.
Right.
It's a little bit different when it hits Casco, but they do have the right of way. So I suppose, one of the ideas that they brought forward was that anybody who's using this trail, they want to bring people into the downtown areas of the cities of Richmond and of St. Clair. So it does some good for the merchants there, and of course, you get the river view in St. Clair. So you can add to that, guys, but?
There are a couple of other factors. I mean, a lot of us felt that the Grashit route might be much prettier, but there's no real facilities, like gas stations and so on, if you have to stop. And the Fred Moore Highway route has another kind of an advantage, and that is it runs right by a park. And the turn of secure monies from the Alf Wilson Foundation, which has about a billion dollars that they have to spend on things like this and other things. I don't know what the deadline is, 2017 years they have left.
It was 2020, then, yes.
They have a lot of money, and the foundation is committed to spending that amount of money. They have as much as they started with, because the money has accrued, has compounded. So there may be a possibility that we can seek funds from them to help with our park that's going right by there. And the foundation seems to want to focus on anything that contributes, trails for sure, but things with trails that contribute to economic development. And there's a lot of research that says trails really do that. So Michigan has really an expanding set of trails, and to connect them to lakes, and there's a longer vision is to have a trail that's as long as the Northwest Coastal Trail that runs all around the lakes, longer actually. If you look on the internet, they have all kinds of master plans for trail initiatives. They're not exactly on schedule, but they're really doing stuff. And St. Clair County doesn't offer a lot, so I think we're lucky to be here.
Another point they brought out was that if they run the trail up Division and Fred Moore Highway, there's a park and ride there. People could bring their bikes, people could bring their kayaks and get down to our park, or whatever. So, but all of this depends on if they get the grant money that they're going for. If not, then everything's put on hold.
So maybe a bridge that goes over?
Possibly.
The WMR? Because, I mean, the traffic there, if you're walking or biking?
Yeah. Not good.
Right. So overpass, too, would be welcoming.
That bridge would cost close to a million dollars.
Yeah, and it would look like a billion. Yeah, there's a billion, a billion, though.
The biggest obstacle is I-94 in Belver.
Well, any bridge that isn't white.
But they know that bridge is there when they start. It's not a big surprise, so.
And they got money.
Yeah.
Sure will.
Yeah.
See what happens.
Another thing about Grashit, Bill and I were about two years ago at this time of thing, that the only thing, they say Grashit is the distance, and then Marysville, it comes into a very non-friendly business district in Marysville. Although after the meeting, Mark Brosher and I, we're talking, maybe in the future, a secondary trail along Grashit should be?
Do you want to go into Marysville? I guess that's fine.
You go into Marysville with this park, too. I mean, this trail and the river.
Well, the disappointing part, I asked a question, whether the Wilson Foundation supports water trails, because there's another big initiative. Apparently not yet, if at all, but there are people that are trying to get them to support water trails, which would be FNR out.
Yeah. Clear out.
There's a lot of discussion about how you clear these river out. And I guess there is a program or a protocol that they develop for the Clinton River that's a safe protocol for how you clear out rivers, because it's dangerous, is what I said. And they're doing it with volunteers, so it's possible that with that help, you know, that head of the river, then we might be able to do so.
The one thing about?
Could use that tanninite thing they were talking about.
You just said that the other day.
I said I'd do all three.
Yeah, yeah.
The one thing about?
Is that what they call that stuff? That they were talking about?
I don't think it, I don't think it.
I don't know what you heard.
The big problem with that, it needs to be determined in court, is on how many feet on each side of the river that someone could access. I talked to many people, and no one gave the same thing.
High water.
Yeah, but still, but I've heard other versions, and it needs to be determined in court, guaranteed, just like right now, it's going through Great Lakes access, that's going to the Supreme Court.
But Michigan's history is, I went through this in a meeting with the DQ, is you can go in the water, but the property owner owns the shore. Now, if you can get out, if you can't get through, it would take your kayak and walk around a tree and go back in. That's it. So if you want to clean it out, if the property owner says no, you're not going in.
Yeah.
So we got a plan for that, maybe we'll see what happens with the consultant for the park.
There isn't a right of way?
That's what we just talked about.
Nope.
It's right to the water.
There's some states, they were telling us that just mean, where you can't even let your feet touch the ground in the river, because that's part of the property.
I believe it has to do with whether or not it's considered, if you could use it for logging, it has different.
So it's not a simple thing.
It's all over the country. In the West, it's really, because the water rights were such a problem, it's crazy out there.
So I'm going to get with the committee and a consultant. I did get a couple of bids. What I wanted to do was fly it with a drone, and get GPS and pictures of all the trees, and correlate that to the property owners by every tree on both sides, and then see what we can do with that. But I haven't given out the bid yet, we'll see what the committee and the consultant says.
Google Earth doesn't pull that up?
You know, we have pictures, but you can't tell. Plus, I don't know, I can walk down the river, but I can't tell who owns that parcel, who owns that parcel. There's no way to tell. Well, you have to know who owns it if you're going to try and deal with that person in some way to get that tree out of there. Because, you know, we can't afford helicopters pulling them out.
Sadly.
Well, we'll see what happens. There's a lot of trees. About five years ago, when they did the watershed plan, they anticipated you could clean them out for, and I think they bumped their head, for something like 10 grand. I don't even think you could phase it for 10 grand. Now Columbus, they have a thousand-foot log there. So they're looking, trying to get a grant to take those trees and pack them against the bank to stop erosion. But they haven't gotten anything yet. That's their plan, because there's so many of them, they don't know how to, they've talked about burning them, I mean, they can never move them off. There's just too many. So in Chinatown Township, they're loaded. Once you get to East China, it's open from there to the river. So the intent is to get it open all the way back, so it's a blue way, they call it, so you could theoretically throw your kayak in. That's why the county park over there in Columbus doesn't have a kayak launch.
Real China.
They love kayak launches, but they know they're never going to get any place, because if you go 10 feet, that's as far as you're going to get. And you got to get out, go around a tree.
And then every year after.
Yeah. Well, you still get trees falling in, but these are still, most of the white ash, they're still there. They had the same thing in the 50s with the elm trees. Every elm tree in Michigan died right now, and they had the same thing. So it's just too many trees. So we'll see.
We'll see what our planner has to say.
Okay?
Okay? Moving on. Item B, DTE Street Light Conversion. I contacted VTE about, I don't know, six, eight weeks ago, and I talked to the gentleman in charge and told him I wanted information on converting our streetlights. And we got this this afternoon, and it looks pretty encouraging to me. It would save us, it would cost us about $11,000.
That's not bad.
But the payback is less than four years. And after that, you're saving, if the rate stays the same, you're saving $2,900 a year.
Wow.
They don't burn out fast, I mean, they last for a long time.
So? And it has to be signed by the 30th of June.
Oh.
And converted by the end of November, so I have to get ahold of the gentleman, I got some questions. But, so I'd really like to vote on it in June, then we can get it signed, get them moving on it. We currently have 44 lights in the township. Sometime this year, we're probably going to look at adding one or two on Meisner Road after they get it paved, if there aren't any there at that intersection, so.
Where on Meisner Road?
Wherever there is a light.
Mayor Road doesn't have one.
Well, China should put one there.
Why would China?
Because it's the border road. They take care of the roads, so.
That's why.
Anyway, there is one at Palms, there is one at County Line, so you might be looking at Church Road and Hessen Road, and?
They won't.
I'll have to get more information.
Is there one at BTE right down?
Hessen Road doesn't have a light?
No, I don't believe so.
We actually have two intersections with BTE, you know, on both sides of the overpass.
Because even though it's paved down there, I don't think there's streetlights, I have to try and find my data.
Because we have BTE that's between Meisner and Lindsey there, and then we have the actually, that comes along the golf course from Springborn to Meisner.
I don't think we have lights there. I've been through there eight billion times.
Plus that one, both of them are down at the bottom of, you know, the overpass, so maybe it'd be looked for with both.
We'll see, but that really isn't a conversion. And so I want to address this first.
And then do those, are you going to do those?
Well, yeah, they don't require what the cost is, because if they have to put a pole in, it's quite costly to put a streetlight in. So their planner would have to tell you that. So I just, since we got this afternoon, I did not feel comfortable voting on it tonight, so it's just for information. Unless you guys tell me otherwise, I'm going to move ahead.
Let's move.
Well, I would say let's move ahead.
Update of technology, it can. Albeit of technology, it can...
I would say let's vote on it now.
No, because I have a couple of questions. It says it has to be...
All right.
It has to be done by November the 30th, so my question is...
Can they get it done by November?
If they don't get it done, do I lose that portion of the grant and stuff for medicine? So it's going to cost me money? Or does, you can do it again next year, which didn't get done? So I just got a couple of questions about it.
Okay.
We'll have time. Okay, moving on, payment of the bill.
Any questions on the bill?
I made a motion to pay the bills as submitted.
I'll support it.
Will get supported to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Yes, I think. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is citizens' comments. We don't have many tonight, but if you have anything you'd like to ask or comment?
Whoa!
You'd like your name for the record, but if you don't want to give it, that's okay too.
That's okay.
Joe, it's Mary Jo Wellantovic. We've just been interested in the Parks and Rec moving forward and the growth of the expansion on Meisner, and it's, it's exciting stuff, so...
And the property on Meisner?
Yeah, we live on Meisner, so...
Oh, we plugged the well, didn't we?
Yep, we did.
We plugged the well.
Big news.
Yeah, I know, the payment, that's a long time coming, too.
You know what, and that's another thing that we will be talking with the planner about, is that what properties should we keep for collateral? And what properties perhaps should we sell? That'll be something that this group, that Mary Jo has, said she will come at least to one and see how it goes.
Right.
Hopefully she stays. But that's something that we'll be talking to her about.
And I have no doubt that Mrs. Blau will, Ms. Blau will have a very strategic, I mean, a long...
Yeah, and she does, she really does. That's why they hired her.
Well, we don't want to get rid of properties just to settle short-term goals.
Yeah, no, she said, there's some things you need for collateral, and you need to have that in your back pocket.
Preserves, nature preserves. Help batteries.
Yeah.
I mean, or something for, we may keep properties we'll never see, but future generation shows.
Yeah, so I'm curious if there is a, a long-term goal of having an on-grant, an off-grant from 94 on Meisner.
Oh, gosh. We have, we have a clearing that for 25 years, I think. I wouldn't hold your breath.
When they started paving Meisner, they were trying to get him to put that in their master plan for future construction, and they told me they didn't get them.
Because the 26 mile on County Line, trying to get on 94 in the morning, I mean, it's, it's crazy. And you guys mentioned about the traffic accidents and whatnot.
That's why I think they're kind of want to do it, because it's too costly to improve 26. But the odds of getting an exit on 28, I would say are very remote in the near future.
I got mixed emotions.
Yeah.
I, I have no problem, I had 26 mile road that night, but I do have 4:30 in the morning that's...
Yeah, there you go.
But I can't even imagine what it would be like, 5:00, 4:00. I can't even imagine, you know. Every once in a while, I forget, and I want to pick up a book or drop off at the Ira Township Library, and I get to the end of Meldrum and 26, and then I go, oh, this is why, you know, no, don't even try to get across. So I don't know what it's like every day.
I'm just concerned about where Meisner gets done, the intersection there of Palms and Meisner, because, you know, it'll be, just like the one intersection, was it Starville Road where it's on the roadway?
Well, well, but there has, the, the good thing is, there has been a stop sign at Meisner in Palms forever. It's only, well, it's only when you initiate something, and, and, you know, people should be aware of it, but they just blow through it. They just did that in Marine City at King Road in Chartier. All of a sudden, I come up and there's a flashing red light where there was never a signal before, and I'm thinking, what do I do with a flashing red light? Oh, okay. And it's just that initial six months or so, when the locals aren't used to it being there, and they blow that, and then...
Even if Palms is still, you know, there's no stop there, I'm also wondering if we could get the county at a certain point to put a blinker there, a caution blinker.
I don't think they do that, them.
Well, they don't do streetlights.
Well, they didn't do it at King...
They could put a flasher if they wanted to, but they're, they're going to go with traffic studies and follow what they find.
I think they'll do whatever they did at King Road and Meisner, because I mean, that's, you just start driving, and then all of a sudden, there's a stop sign after six miles and, you know, but they just put the signs that say, "This is not a four-way stop," and they put three of them all in a row.
How long did it take us to convince the county there should be a stoplight at Palms and Marine City Highway?
Oh, yeah.
We pounded on them for years, and then they finally relented.
Yeah, well, that's what your traffic studies and your death and your accident studies show.
Hopefully not.
Yeah, let's wait for people to die, and we'll do something.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much what it is. I think it took three nuns in a, in a station wagon up at Grashit and 31 before, you know, they, they took some action out there.
That's why they're doing roundabouts. Fatality, just fatality. That's why Wadams and 32s get one.
Yeah. I think they cause more.
No, because you got to slow down.
Yeah.
So even though you might have 100 accidents, probably the odds are nobody's going to die.
Also, the T-bones.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah, that's true.
So, before they put the intersection of Division Road and Grashit there, the glass placed, the automotive glass repair, they would have, I don't know, just they had emergency speed dial, they had so many accidents there.
Really? So, and we all get used to it sooner or later.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Moving on, we're up to adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Will this party adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.